All right, it's seven o'clock and we're gonna start today's meeting, August 21st, 2023. I'd like to start with the warrants. Accounts payable number 20, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, but payroll 20 for $1,887.54. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept accounts payable number 21 for $134,309.28. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd just like to say the reason that is so high is because almost $80,000 is for RSU quarterly payment and another $20,000 approximately for Rubler. So it's a little high this week. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for August 14th, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and so I'm going to... Hello? Sign that? So, you finally connected. Is that something? Nope. Good evening.
Evening, welcome back.
Thank you.
Tell them meet once, meet low.
I was here.
They're on vacation rotation.
Yeah, just in Virginia. Yeah, yeah, next we could be somebody else. All right, citizens issues, and since we had three citizens just show up, any issue with you guys? Nope, all right. I had one that came up and I'll share that one, and that was about dogs running loose. And I know in the past, people have come to us when there's a dog loose because we had a constable who would take care of it, or the animal control officer, because I know I've called you here, but we no longer have that. So if anyone has an issue with dogs or any other animal running loose, we'd like to suggest that they call the Lincoln County Animal Control Officer. We are a part of that. In fact, we had to be, so it's sort of out of our jurisdiction. It's on our website, but I also just wanted to remind people that if there's an issue with a dog or any other animal, to call them in the numbers on our website. Any other issues that you've heard of with citizens?
Was it a dangerous dog or anything, or just somebody?
It was chasing somebody. I don't know if that dog would have bitten somebody or not. I get nervous when a dog follows me and chases me.
When you were here, you were here Wednesday and...
I asked?
Yeah, well, I did. I drove down and they had caught him. It was a big standard poodle. It wasn't like a small dog, but he came in and said, "Oh, what do I do? There's a dog running around."
And did the owner say that dogs are not supposed to be out and about?
Yeah, I think they were from, they were out of state plates, so they might have been like, you know, visiting or something. That happens a lot, I find.
Yeah.
Right? People come over from...
Was they over at the end? Was they over at the end of the road, people with all the votes?
Bass Point. He was all the way down that way. Yeah, yeah. So, it does happen, but yeah.
Yeah, I know we had an issue earlier this summer with somebody who had a dog from away. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the dog got hit.
And a lot of people, yeah, posting on Facebook, in case, you know, in case you see the dog and stuff, yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda, we're flying through these, is on roads. All right. Our road commissioner, any updates? You were going to have something for Bay Shore Road?
I do.
All right, you want to share that?
Yeah, it's pretty basic because April, I was coming down tomorrow night, being very, this type of... Four culverts on Bay Shore Road, if you will. Bearing 12 inch, 215s, an eight key.
Those are those culverts out there?
No, those are for solo road and over run. That's probably like, gonna put some river out down on Bay Shore Road, because there's wicked erosion on Jeff Dexter's wind called across the road and was on his land. His car built part of tracts in there. And I think we should put some rock in there. He's okay with us doing and addressing that because it is kind of down the water. There's a long run and up and down that one's raining and it's white water.
And you know, I know you noticed the issue on... Oh, what's the, what's the road? East Shore, West Shore Road by Connie's house.
Yeah.
And I drove by there, I think Saturday, and it looked like there was a hole again.
I was down there Sunday morning before grace.
Yeah.
To make sure that things were patched up, because I didn't want anybody to get hurt down there.
Nobody collapsing into a sinkhole.
So yeah, I see it and I addressed it Sunday morning. It's, you know, it's just like a white, it's like a feeling, mine, you know, where's the next one, you know?
Yeah, yeah. It's getting worse and worse because it looks like more and more...
It is, and that's gonna be addressed that summer. That's unfortunately, I had other plans, but that's gonna take priority because it's more of my safety issue.
Yeah.
And if it keeps, you know, we may have temporarily posted if it keeps going.
We're talking about...
Sure.
Sure, 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 sure.
Where was it? Where was this?
The Lola Causeway.
By Connie, Osters's house. Gilco?
Gilco.
Yeah, yeah. That causeway there, if you, it's always...
Yeah, that's the one that you're sort of...
Yeah.
Yeah, what problem is it?
Trying to maintain ongoing.
Yeah, it was built with big rocks.
Right.
And the water goes through the rocks, but the fines, the fine in the way out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think we're gonna pull the hot dog off. We fixed the airbag issue. I was hoping Grant, some sort of Grant Murray was gonna come through so we could do what's actually gotta be done there. And this could all be wrapped up in the winter, but we can't wait.
No, so it's just stopgap until... Now we tell them weekly now that you're getting calls, or I'm getting texts.
Reweighing, and that's not good when I get down there.
On your own, yeah, yeah.
I'm glad Carol's there. I thanked her, I texted her, thanked her and expressed my appreciation for her.
And I know Carol Norris walks down there almost daily. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Between Carol and Connie, the two of them are pretty much constant comment.
So yeah, I had no communication with Connie, but I have with Carol a couple times.
Yeah.
And once she, you know, wants to know what's wrong.
Is that the one that you had said previously, you put some fabric down and tried to...
Right, the fabric, just the whole, whatever, like, put over the tops, you know, ride over. Been there a long time, but it's showing the same.
Yeah.
The water going through, taking a little bit of the dirt every time it goes in and out.
Yeah.
But I don't... I don't wanna address the surface because anything other than that...
Yeah.
Will do, yeah. All that stuff.
So Jim, what were you thinking that you'd do as an intro?
Take the hot dog off and take what we can of the fines off and put some bigger off. If what's down there is bigger off and fill the gaps from that, probably some handware or machine ware. And make it a lot just smaller off, just smaller off, and then put some grit and some fabric down. And then put just, you know, you only need four, five inches of gravel over it and then replant off it to keep the surface water from pulling down through the wood. But, you know, it sounds simple, but it's...
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot, actually, giving that span that you have to do.
Yeah, it's not gonna be cheap, you know, I mean, that's the big... That's next year, it's a big thing, bigger than putting the gravel down this year.
Wow, wow, yeah, yeah. And it's a serious issue.
It is. Me to be willing to say our three quarters of the road money's gonna get out there on this one stall is pretty serious.
Yeah.
And I don't mind going down there, filling holes, I can fill a lot of holes for what that's gonna cost. But if there's ever an issue, it's not gonna be a good one.
Yeah, I envisioned someday one of those big sinkholes that just on TV or wherever, where all of a sudden the car goes down in it.
Well, I don't think a whole car would, but you know, fuel pressure, something lost a tire in there, it's not gonna be done. Damage, bad hole, you know, could be substantial damage because it's gonna contribute to an abrupt stop, but you put a wheel through the...
Yeah.
It's gonna be a rush.
See, I think bigger than you. I think the whole car.
Yeah, no, no.
I hope I'm wrong.
Oh yeah, no, I don't think we'll have a whole car down there, but...
Yeah.
It won't be good.
Yeah, but it's good that you're keeping in touch with me.
Unfortunately, like I said, any big heavy trucks go, usually don't go across that, but not a lot of them. And it doesn't get a lot of traffic because it's right at that stall where I know Mike much more usually uses up the West Shore and the larger people.
Yeah, they use upper, upper...
Or post office.
Yeah, or post office.
The trouble is, we have that really as part of scenic drive. So we sort of encourage visitors to drive that loop and particularly that spot because it's so beautiful.
The chaos, right?
You're just calling on the island, basically, you know, it's...
There's beauty. Yeah.
And I hear you loud and clear, Jeff, that's why the road breaks too. I was just, I didn't wanna see anybody get hurt.
Yeah, yeah. And knowing you're aware of it, knowing that Carol is keeping in contact with you, that's really helpful. Anything else on her?
Uh, culvert in there, my Gary's. We're gonna build the road up there and get the water and go in the right direction. Culvert's gonna help this winter. The culvert will definitely help dry it up down below this ledge, comes right out into the ditch here. But the road's gonna have probably three load of gravel up there. Which means you should care, once the last of the hot dog off, go gravel down. It is too big of an area to pave back in. Because in my mind, that's the next stall that should be brushed over West Shore Road. People on East Shore Road saying, "No, when you stop, the long paths are..." But don't want to do so much in time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've been there, we have.
In fact, I remember they used to complaining after we fixed the road there for them. They said that the people were speeding too much.
They just picked it up, both five or 10 minutes, but same as on Main Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Five years now, because they only drive five of the people that are out here five years.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of 50.
So that's it. I looked at a little bit what you did there for at Gary's and... So yeah, it's a lot of, you had to take up to put that culvert in across.
And from there, to the left, ain't much of a problem. We ain't losing any quality hot dog by any means.
No, no.
And like I said, two year, a couple months ago. Forward pavement that just after Gary's, that follow should really be built up a couple feet, so that would all tie together.
Yeah, drain better once, you know, if it actually, you drain alongside, it'll be better with the road.
Part of the water's coming out of this driveway and this ledge here, there's no real way to cure that other than building the road up, keep water from going across the road. And that's what's happening in that stall.
Always, always something.
Well, you think you put one fire out, then another one falls out.
Yeah, never really. All right, status of assessing and preparation for 2025 commitment, or 2023, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, Evan DuCaski, our misfully assessing agent, hopefully it will be able to come tonight, but he had a prior meeting. So he may get tied up. If he can't do it today, hopefully he'll be able to come next week. But the status is that he's completed the input of the assessments this year, new updates to the assessments and the personal property tax. So we're ready then to finalize the commitment. And so this week, it's one of the things we'll have to do is to sit down and look for problems, look for errors, and go through the property tax data. He's recommending a factoring percentage of 25%. So this is the principle of raising all valuations 25%. So everybody's property gets changed the same way, your taxes don't change. We just, the mill rate's gonna get smaller, but your tax bill won't get any smaller, but you can get any bigger. She did the same. So now she had a building permit. So he's run that scenario and that will get us up comfortably for the next two years. So we shouldn't have to worry about this again. The, just, I think we kept, a man mentioned this last week. The state, in state size, Westport's valuations have gone up about $20 million the last two years each year. It's a, it's a big jump. That, but it reflects, I guess, the housing market as we, as we've seen. People have been coming with a fair amount of money. We see some of that on the island, but definitely in the, what people are willing to pay for property has gone up considerably. And the trouble that gives us is that means that whether we like it or not, all our properties probably are worth more if they were on the market. So in the state size, we're undervalued in our historic assessments. So this factoring will bring us up to where the state thinks we should be. In two years, then we need to do our full revaluation. And that will sort things out because not everyone's properties is going up that, that's only 5%. Some people could be gone 50%, and I suspect it's the storefront properties who've appreciated the most. And people who are not storefront, probably less. So in the two years' time when we do a full reassessment, this'll get sorted out. And the real differences in property value should get reflected. But this'll get us through the hump. So that's the crutch this week is to get this done. We had a hiccup. The state came back and informed Ashley, our treasurer, that last year when we made our commitment, we said we thought we were at 100% of the state valuation, while we weren't. And in state size, we, we committed, we raised, our tax commitment was reflecting an incorrect evaluation of it. And they told us that we need to go back and revise that. So that's something else that we'll have to do this week is go and basically revise last week's, last month's, or last year's valuation. And there may be a need to give some money back to the state. Because the reason why we're doing the factoring is because if we're not seeing it being at 100% or close to it, the state cuts down on what they give us for the homestead reimbursements for the veterans, exemptions, for anything, the state money of that sort, based upon property, the state cuts back. So we don't want to lose our money. We may lose a little bit of last year's money. We may have to give it back. But we don't know what that will be until we do this recent middle and the state comes back and tells us what they, they think we owe. So that's a kind of an update on the assessment and what we're doing for this year's commitment. We're driving to get the commitment done, that's saying fixing what we need to raise in property taxes by August 31st, so that Ashley will be able to issue the tax bills in September and get them due payable about mid-October. So I'm trying to make that the regular, regular flow of things.
So is that 25% we mentioned? Is that going to be before we assess, they're gonna be against everything?
Yeah.
Are we probably gonna get a 25% increase?
In their valuation, but their tax bill, unless...
Well...
Yeah, yeah. And that's probably what we have to look at, to see what we, what the tax rate ended up being. So, so stay tuned. Next week, we should have a little bit more information for you.
And then in two years, when we do the valuation for everybody again, that's when we'll make the adjustment. So maybe two years goes up 25% this year, and then two years from now, we discover that, oh, it's that much.
Probably when Mike will take a turn and maybe assess.
Lord, you're seeing the mountain coming out on my wall.
All right, so we'll keep you posted, but I'm trying to stay on top of this, Jeff said. All right, correspondence. I don't remember the update, but we can talk about it. Did you see an update, Cory? Anyway, on our agenda is an update on the acquisition of the town dump. And I believe right now, we're just waiting to sign some final papers to make sure that it comes to us. And we have had a conversation with the folks from, was it DEP?
Yep.
Who have said that we really don't have to do anything to protect that area. It's pretty much well protected now from a lot of fires and whatnot. It's covered, nothing's losing. So, but we probably need to have a conversation to see if we want to at least put some shrubs or something there to sort of make sure that all views from the road are obscured, can't be easily accessed. There are houses on either side of that, so really the only access is by the road, and that's not that easy either. So we just have to wait for the final paperwork that says it is actually ours. So crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, I guess. So we'll have a final update on that, we'll share that. And Jeff, you had said something about getting information from Mayor, Mary Ellen, about water, and I haven't seen that.
Not so much water, it was that the...
Testing the wells.
The consultants who had done the presentation to us from Ransom Consulting on the property, the well testing, are now with a different company.
Yeah.
And that we can inquire them about that, because we still have this action item of having the, the Butters Wells tested.
So we need to get back with that.
At least to find out if we want to set it up with them. The opportunity there is that they take responsibility for getting the testing done. The state will reimburse, we believe, 75% of the cost of the testing. And this type, this water testing is more expensive than the regular, so it has to do with special ops lab that can, that can find the PFAS chemicals. There likely will be some additional costs that the town is reimbursed for. But we'll have to see what that is.
Right, I remember one time we had asked, and I think they would pay for, the state had paid for like 75%, we weren't even writing. And I think they moved on and we moved on, so let's add that again. All right, let's move on to admin items. Board of Appeals appointments. We got some names, and I don't know if that was changed, did you have those changed either?
Well...
So you want to go into... We had suggested a name or two a couple weeks ago. And then Ralph as Board, Ralph Jacobs as Chair of the Board also gave us a few names and asked us to look at those names and make some decisions about, about that.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the...
This is from, you want them, Ralph? Yeah. Okay. So we had suggested Barbara Cray. And to add to that list, he had suggested Nick Pagan, Carol Norris, and Carl Skidmore. So it looks like they need two names.
Well, they have room for two alternates.
Two alternates, right. Um...
And you had confirmed with Barbara that she was definitely interested.
Yeah, I confirmed with her on Wednesday that she's definitely interested.
What have we, so I think Carl is someone who's been around Westport for a number of years, but is a summer resident. So he's now...
He's full-time, he's full-time.
I know, so he's now here full-time. So he's someone who knows the island, who knows the island folks, though. Nick is relatively new.
Yeah.
But both of you have been trying to get active. Well, so we...
Carol Norris. And Carol, I know, she's actually our Deputy GA Administrator. And I would like to actually broach the idea of becoming the town health officer as well, since we need a new town health officer. So actually, she's got, and she does the Alzheimer's, she does the Alzheimer's thing.
Yeah.
So I feel like she's got great skills. She's a retired nurse. And so I'd like to sort of wrap her if I could, if she'd be willing.
That sounds like a good, you're right.
Yeah.
And I think that sort of fits her interest too.
Yeah, I know she immediately, you know, stepped up to the plate when I started the Alzheimer's conversation and she was willing to take that over. And she's been doing that regularly now. Now she does, I can confirm this fast. And she's also been active in helping me with GA-related issues. So she does a lot with that, right? And I feel like that's probably her real love. Sorry, Carol, if you really liked this position. So we really have three people. We have Nick Pagan, Carl Skidmore, and Barbara Cray. So I, based on the fact that Carl's been here, based on the fact that Barbara has confirmed that she definitely is interested, I would, I would like to propose those two names.
Has anyone talked to Carl?
No. Well, I don't know. These were names that somebody else proposed.
Yeah, they talked about it, but I didn't get a sense that they had...
We probably have to reach out before we...
So if you confirm that Barbara's interested?
Yes.
And again, certainly as an attorney, she has, she brings something to bear, but we already have attorney on the board.
Yeah.
So I could see that she adding more strength to the board of peers.
She definitely would understand all the legalities, all the ordinances and stuff. So, so maybe I'd like to make a motion that we recommend Barbara Cray to the Board of Appeals.
Well, so we appoint.
Appoint. We're gonna appoint, and we do the appointment? Not, okay. Aldous Lee believes that I'm learning. So I'd make a recommendation or make a motion that we appoint Barbara Cray to the Board of Appeals.
Let's second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And as far as Carl, I propose that one of us goes and talks to Carl. Do any of you know him well? I know him, I know him.
Not well.
Anybody want to talk to him? Would you like me to go do that?
I think, I think you would be an excellent choice to do that.
Okay, so on my to-do list, I will talk to Carl and see if he's interested. And then we'll come back next week and if he's interested or not, then I can also talk to Nick if he is. Because I know both of them, they actually live next door to each other, so it'll be an easy trip. All right, so other admin items, we also have... We had started a keys policy. In fact, we've talked at length about having some different policies on all sorts of different things. And so what we've decided as a whole team is to look at like clumps of policies that need to be established and put into writing. And so one of the policies that we've discussed and we've put into writing now and we want to approve is key policy. And that policy basically is about who should get what keys. And technically, what we've learned... And technically, what we've learned is that every time there's a new select board member each, every year, if there's a turnover, we're supposed to get new keys for the entire building. We haven't done that, but anyway, so just for security reasons and whatnot, that's what is suggested, I don't know if it's required or not. So I'd like to read the, the policy that April worked on and is proposing. All keys and alarm codes to town property will be administered and distributed by the town clerk, according to the table below, with the exception of the fire station, which will be administered by the fire chief, and the rite house, which will be administered by the history committee and helping hands. The town clerk will also be responsible for keeping a record of who has keys and security codes to what town properties, securing the return of keys and cancellation of security codes when town personnel or volunteers leave a position that entitle them to keys, and recommending the replacement of locks to the select board as necessary. Fireproof vault in the town office contains all interior lock keys. The town office staff alone, that means that doesn't include us, the town staff alone have access to the fireproof vault, giving them access to all filing cabinets, desks, shred box, absentee ballot box, drop box, overnight drop box, voting machines, and the town hall closet where election materials are stored. And then she had made a, a chart saying who should get what. And so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the policy. If I, first of all, any discussion?
Well, yeah, I, I like to actually look at things before, so I don't
Well, you have a copy, I gave you one earlier.
Okay, but this isn't what I've read.
I don't know where your copy is, so here's mine. Okay, so you haven't read it.
Yeah, so I'd like to suggest we, so what I hear is fine. I think there's, there's word that I was actually putting in terms of the policy that we but I also suggest we should add to the language, the policy, that could be added.
And I'm not sure we all agreed on that, so
Well, like the fire, she should have access to all of those. The fire department should have access to all those. That, that to me was a fairly simple one.
Okay. The fire chief alone should have
Not, not, not the fire department. Basically, the chief has the responsibilities to make sure that he's got, the department's got it. But we want to make sure that the, the fire department has, has access, if needed, to the town buildings. And then you might, you might not agree, but I, I think that's a pretty good question. The other thing I wanted to make sure we said is that access key is really based upon need. And, and people don't have to have a key. So for example, the, the committee chairs may have a need for a key, if they're having a meeting here in this, in the town office, then it's good that they have a key. But if they don't regularly do meetings here
They don't need one.
They don't need one, so we don't have to encourage people to have a key.
Right, right.
But make it available if there's a need for them to have a key. The part of it is just to make sure we manage the keys in a way that says there's a need to have the key.
Okay, is that the wording you wanted that way?
Yeah, I had suggested some wording on that.
So, let's, we'll table this and come back next week and try again. So maybe you can comment on it and send it back, I just made some notes on that. Alright, um, the other policy that we're looking at that we have not, we're not sharing tonight is a policy on procurement. We sort of have a policy, but nothing in writing. And so we base it a lot on what we've done with the bids and whatnot, and how we've gone about that process. But actually, we need a written policy required for getting any FEMA funds. So that's sort of pushing that as well to getting something in writing, so.
I recommend is watch the limit, put a limit on what you put out in the bid. Because if you put every little thing up in the bid, we're going to be sitting here all summer waiting for something to happen.
Well, I think that should be part of the procurement, we talked about that with the roads. It's like, if it's under twenty thousand, then maybe we don't need to put out for bid, but that's not anything in writing. And, and we need to put something in writing.
We actually have a policy about Well, I, I remember seeing it, I don't remember laying my hands on it, but we have that policy.
That's a good, that's a good number on that.
Yeah, but it's, it's not a complete procurement policy. So it also talks, we should have somebody that talks about how we administer the procurements. Complexes of interest get managed, so you don't have someone who's involved managing the bid.
Right, that's why I try and distance myself.
That's right.
You're called the dollars and cents on this end, no the other end.
So there's more to it than just that, but, but, but that's part of what we want to
That was my own concern, is you know, I don't want to repackage an old job, I have to go through the whole process.
No, that doesn't make sense, no. No, and um one of the things that we've discovered is, I think there are about four books that we're finding with different policies in it, and some of them are quite old, most of them we haven't seen or didn't know anything about. So we're trying to organize and revisit all of those policies, even if it's one that was, that there was a policy on, let's put it in a manageable place, under whatever makes sense, like procurement. So, and then update anything, and even if it's something that was old but we like it, then, then let's at least say that it's now, we reviewed it, we agreed. So we're, that's part of our Wednesday meetings, is to really go through that and have a conversation about what do we need policies on, where do we already have policies but need to be updated and
Be in one book. Where are they available and get shredded in other form?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, but it's a slow process, so Yeah, but this is one that we're working on and we'll have probably next week, because FEMA does need something and I know that the EMA group is looking for funds from FEMA. And so we have to have something in place where they want to prove it, so. Any other admin items that either of you know about?
Well, I, I think, talk briefly about the training that Ashley and I went to, you may have more. After Ashley and I talked a little bit about it, so much, but we went to a two-day class in government county. And the, one of the key takeaways is that government accounting is different than regular accounting, but it relies on business accounting. So the principle's the same, but there's some additional complexities. But I'll be frank, it, it takes a little bit of time to get your head around. I've had a fair amount of accounting over the years, and it's different. One of the, the takeaways that leads to us is that we have some accounts that are trust accounts, where the money is entrusted to the town to manage, and it's in our money market account, for example. But, but again, those get reported separately in, from the town books, and we're doing that. So our, our books do reflect those distinctions, but it's important for us to remember that not only there is the checking account is, is available for us to spend, but there's commitments on that money elsewhere. There are funds like the ARCA funds and the Community Resents Partnership Grant that are in our, in our checking account, but, but are segregated and we have to not co-mingle that, that, because they have specific purposes. So that's, that's sort of pretty simple in, in one sense. One of the tools with the Trio system that we haven't been using is doing a trial balance. So at the end of the year, looking at all the, the transactions and seeing where we stand. I did this manually when I was analyzing what we were, could project for surplus. So, but it's, we should be able to do this out of Trio. The trouble is that in the past Trio was not set up with budgets, not completely. So you couldn't trust the results of a trial balance. You don't know, hey, looks like we're going to spend this account, but was that count fully budgeted? So, so that's part of what Ashley is fixing, is setting, and she already is done, she's already put the budgets in. But for us, maybe at the end of this month, start generating reports that we can look at. We can generate a report that looks at, say, all the public works budgets. So that Jim has a picture of where he stands against his budget, but what's, what's been committed. So that e- each area should be able to see their, where they stand. And we really have people managing their budgets. To me, same thing for the town hall committee, since they take responsibility for that budget. Right landing committee takes responsibility for that budget. So as we look around, there's a chance to use the, use the system now to hopefully improve how we manage kind of finances.
Things like training budgets, you know, we're running it.
We have to budget for the training upfront. But, so that's part of what, so and so the week you learn. There are some tweaks that I think Ashley picked up on that, that she showed you in terms of how she's handling some of the, some of the accounting. But it was a really, I, I'd say really good class. And, and I think it was mostly town treasurers who were in the class. I think I was the only select person, though there were some other oddballs there as well, including the treasurer from our house. He was more of a volunteer than an employee. But everybody in the class was like taking feverish notes as the, as the guy talking about it. Was describing some of the things about what to do, what not to do. So a lot of tips, which is kind of what you hope to get about how to do the job better. One of the scary things that he said though is that the audits that are done for us, it seemed like most of the towns, the auditors actually the ones who's preparing their financial statements. So we have our financial statements in our town report, we're basically taking that out of the audit report. And it used to drive me nuts that, you know, I ask, you know, where are we on our budget? And, and not really get a good answer, that's because the budget wasn't in the, in the Trio system. So we'll, we'll get it off in the future, but we actually should get so we can do the first cut at what our financial statement is. What is our balance sheet? You know, what, what is our segment of revenues and uses of money, the equivalent of, of an income statement? We should be able to do that. But in the past, it's been the auditors who do it, of course, and listening to people in the room, most towns, unless they're big like a Brunswick or a Portland, they rely on their auditor to do their books for them. I mean, to, to, to do their financial statements.
Yeah.
Well, that's a scary part because the number of firms doing auditing is going down. So the guy that was presenting wasn't from an audit firm, he says they're taking on their clients.
They're taking away
They're not taking, they're not taking any clients. They, they don't make much money on the audits. You know, I guess for many of the auditing firms, the, the big money or whatever comes in, working with corporations who have money to spend, or they're working with people's taxes, which is pretty routine and regular. And the audit business for towns is something they do outside of tax season. But a number of towns are doing SCAS, I think SCAS still is at least a year behind in getting an audit. Other towns, I guess there's one town that hadn't had an audit since 2019. So basically, that, you know, they, they don't really know for sure where they are.
Should make us feel free.
Well, we, we got, one of the things that came in Friday was the, the engagement letter for WH Bureau, our auditor. So the good news is they still audit our books. We still have an auditor, so that's one of the things we, we need to, to do, is to, is to sign that audit engagement letter. It's something that we do as a select board. I think Ashley probably has that, that letter, but we'll need to decide that and get back to BR. And then try to first and become sooner or later. So again, we know where we're standing officially. But I think Ashley set this up so this year we should have a very good handle on our finances as we go.
Yeah, Ashley is wonderful, very, very knowledgeable. And digs in to things. She's finding lots of things, lucky to have her. Speaking of trainings, I would like to ask the board if, there's a GA basics coming up in September, and I have asked the Deputy GA individual if she would go, and I'd like to go again. And I'd like to see if we can pay for her as GA deputy.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
Frankly, I, I think we've learned the value of having the national training.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I will let her know. And that person, by the way, as I mentioned, was Carol Norris. I've given her the date and I told her that I needed to ask the rest of the board whether we could support her or not. Okay, any other admin items? I don't think we have any new ones for change. Alright, what I'd like to propose then, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
You want to adjourn, want to ask one question? I missed the right time to ask a question. I just wanted to ask if you had time to figure out why the constable made more money in twenty-five years than what he knows today.
You know, that came up, I think it was April that I was talking to about it, and we said we're going to look or something, but none of us got that far. Unfortunately, takes a little bit more time than any of us have, but yeah, seems like, I remember we did talk about it afterwards, and I think it was April that mentioned it, and I don't remember now if she found something or had said she was going to look or something, but yes, you asked a good question and more of a curiosity.
He's not, not a rich man. Between another couple of bucks, probably help him right out.
Yeah.
Maybe he doesn't deserve, I mean, the position doesn't deserve it, that's why I asked.
But there are so many things that, we were having a discussion earlier about why was this decided, why was that decided? It's like unless it's in minutes or something, and then when was it decided? It's hard to sometimes find out why decisions were made when they were. But we'll definitely look into that. Just as, as a curiosity question, and maybe it, maybe that as we look at it, we'll decide for next year's warrant that, you know, we should, we should have more for that position. But, but even knowing why it was decided, you know, I think, would you?
No, because I don't remember what the responsibilities and constable were.
And I know it's changed over time, so
Yeah, I'm completely baffled, so I but I know they included the two jobs they had, so we paid a lot more money. But then when they take the other job away, they end up making less than they did twenty-five years ago, something's wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
So
Yeah, twenty-five years ago, yeah, it, it, we all made less, so yeah, I don't have, yeah. So one of us needs to just sit there and look through all those books up there. Gary, you should come sometime and just look and see. If we can figure out when, what year it was really changed.
Yeah, that's the point.
Then it may be in the minutes.
Yeah, well, you can come in on Tuesday, Thursday, just, you know, just set the table, have at it.
Yeah, because they are in order, but they're all up there.
Might just do that.
Yeah.
I'll go visit these guys.
Because that's what it takes, it's going to take somebody actually looking through, and then once you find out what year it changed, then it should be probably in the warrant items or maybe in minutes or something, that, a discussion about why that happened. And we should have copies of all the minutes, I just don't know how detailed they are. I think they're a little bit more detailed now.
Now that you're recording all the minutes, two years from now, could you type in when did this policy change and find out which meeting?
Oh boy, I wish that could be.
You know, that, this
No, in writing you could.
This allows you to see the meetings, but it doesn't allow you to
No.
Put in a request with certain words or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I I don't think so.
No, you can do that on a big document or, you know, massive document or something, but not, not videos. I like that idea, though, I'm sure so.
That's why, from here on, not anything in this society, you'd be able to say, oh, yeah, that this meeting, you want to watch the meeting?
Yeah.
You know. Because right now, I mean, this is going to be virtually what Gary said, you have to go through all of them and find what changed and find the warrant article and.
Yeah, that's what it would say.
Well, it it is possible, I think, if looking at the the agendas. But the the point is how to get a an intelligent agent that goes through and looks at all the documents for that, it will come back later, that key word. So that's about, I think about the best we could do would be something that that scans documents. It's the sort of thing that they have to do for like legal proceedings, where they're, they've got a tremendous amount of documentation and they have to go through it. But so we possibly could do that, but.
Yeah, I didn't know what's possible on this thing.
Yeah, well, we we don't know how to do it today. I don't know how to do it today.
I don't think there's a technology, at least not available to us today. Yeah, so Gary, Tuesday from eleven to six and Thursday from ninety-two. And we'll set up a table for you and, because like, you know, you asked that question before, it's a great question, and I'm curious, but it's like, it just, to to, that's what it's going to take, is going through all that. But you may discover a lot of other interesting things that you could share with us too, while you're at it.
Yeah, I don't want to know too many.
No, no, we probably don't want to know, because then we'd ask, why did that happen, and and we don't have that history.
Lots of rabbit holes.
Yes, exactly, exactly. All right, so I'm going to try one more time. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
A second?
All right, all in favor?
Now I have a broad question, I don't want to just do.
Hang on, let me end this and stop recording.